Mentioned we were all outside doing our random draw. Shana and Lindsay are going to come up here first and answer the questions. So if you're able, please come on up here. Let's get things going. There we go. Everybody got a chance to pick either a red or a black, high clamor colors for the draw on this thing. And that's how we determine the draw and things like that. Steve up front is going to be doing the timing for the candidates. You both can see the red piece of paper there well, and the green piece of paper. Also, the green will signify 10 seconds remaining in your comment, and the red is you're done. Make sense?
Yes.
Everybody's got paper. There's pens there, water there as well. All right, wonderful. Again, we did a random draw, and let's see. Lindsay won that and chose to answer the second question. So Shana is going to start us off. But first, we have our 60-second opening statements. And Lindsay, we're going to start with you because you had that first draw there. So when you're ready, oh, one more final thing is Steve's not going to start the timer until the candidate actually starts talking, right? So give them a chance to understand the question and give them a chance to fully answer to the best of their capabilities. So once you begin, he's going to start that 60 seconds for your introduction.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lindsay Sapp. I'm the incumbent for seat six.
There we go. How about that?
Much better. Can I start over?
Yep, you sure can.
My name is Lindsay Sapp. I am the...
It's always something.
Lindsay Sapp, I am the incumbent for seat six. I have been appointed to the Shelton City Council in May of 2024. I am currently a homeschooling mother of six children. I was diagnosed with rheumatoid arthritis and systemic lupus as a child. I know a lot about hardships and challenges, but life is about decisions. I decided to go to school. I received an education in music. I got a 4.0 at South Puget Sound Community College. I also received an education in real estate. That is what led me to my position here in government. Since being on council, I achieved my certificate of municipal leadership, which signifies 30 hours of government education. I will be bringing that to the council to help make positive changes for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And once we have the timer set and reset, we're ready to go when you're ready to go.
Hi, my name is Shana Garbrick, and I decided to run for city council because of the struggles that I see here in Mason County. I have, or I was part of legislation to bring recovery dollars to our state. I was very proud of that. From that, I have been engaged with my church at Shelton United Methodist Church, which I have brought another recovery house for women and children into our county because that's one thing that we need here is recovery support. When the recovery, when the community, when the community who has recovered successfully, then we can grow as a community and we can all move forward. But until that is more under, more understood, then we're not going to be able to make our community whole. And that's all that I'm about, is just to make our community more whole and more powerful than it already is. Thank you so much.
Thank you both. One other thing I forgot to mention, these questions come from the last two city council sessions and the last two study sessions, both publicly available in person and for Mason Web TV. That's where I curated these questions. All right, let's get underway with the questions here. Shana, we're going to start with you. We'll have 60 seconds to answer this when you begin talking. Shelton recently adopted an ADA transition plan identifying $26 million in needed sidewalk and accessibility upgrades. How should the city prioritize these improvements with an eight limited budget?
I believe that the city should have a vote for the people to see exactly where the city and the residents want this money to go. And then from there, we can work as a community to get the results that we need as a community instead of just letting the leaders decide where that funds should go. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay?
Yes, so in regards to the ADA transition plan, it is required by Department of Commerce to upgrade. Unfortunately, it is not within our realistic budget to achieve all $26 million. So the state requires us to have a plan and to prioritize the most important pieces of our community first. Obviously, we need accessible doorways and accessible ramps for our sidewalks, but they are going to go ahead and look at the most, I think, the oldest, most outdated, and prioritize that first. And so I think that it is important, but it's required. So it's more about having a plan that we will follow over the next few years and following through with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Lindsay, for you. Residents have raised concerns about vagrancy, public camping, and safety downtown. What approaches would you support to address these issues while balancing compassion and public order?
Thank you for asking. This is a situation that I care deeply about. I think we should handle with compassion. We should approach people and ask them if they would attend services, and we should also ask them what it is that their needs are. In the past, social workers at DSHS used to do this exact thing, and they would put people into appropriate programs. And I see a lack of that at this moment, and I would like to see us kind of go back to that. So at a state level, I would like to see some improvements with DSHS and our social workers because they are well-trained to be able to handle this. With our current community situation, we have kind of a fragmented service provider situation. I do think that we should approach people and ask them what their needs are and to try to get them into services. If they completely reject over and over, I think we should offer them due process, and a judge with compassion will reduce them and help them go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Shana? And I can repeat the question if you need to.
No, I got it. But thank you so much, Jeff, for wanting to say the question again. This is a very deep, not just a one-sided problem. You know, I think in our community, we need to have less soft hands, and people need to get into recovery services. And I believe that we need to have more recovery services out there for these people. But I also believe that we need more housing for everyone that is struggling. But without proper water, without proper electricity, then this can't happen. So I just think that we need to collaborate with the organizations that we have here and even reach from outside of our community to get more resources for our community so that way we can help these people even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay? As Shelton's comprehensive plan looks 20 years ahead, what strategies do you think are most important to manage population growth and housing needs?
This is interesting. We would like to see growth. Cities really want to encourage growth. We don't build housing, so we want to encourage housing. We want to make permit application processes easier. We want to incentivize housing. We want to offer tax exemptions for people to build affordable housing. Commerce requires certain aspects of housing for us as a city. And so I think the important way to go forward with this is to, I'm sorry, the important thing to do is to look forward to the type of housing that we need to have. I think it's important that we don't focus on governments building housing because if we do, we may lose the free market. What we need to do is incentivize developers and builders to come here and build.
Shana?
I believe that we need to look at the zoning and how things are zoned and maybe reconsider how things are zoned to have more housing that way. We have so many abandoned buildings in our city that we could revamp into better housing for everybody. Thank you.
The final question here for this first conversation. Shana will take this. Shana, what worries you most about Shelton's future?
That's a very difficult question. What worries me the most is that we don't know how to come together as a community. We're a very small community, so I believe that if we come together, we can do amazing things because there are so many amazing people, there's so many amazing leaders. And if we were to listen to our community and work together with the resources that we already have here, because like I said, we have amazing resources here, amazing people, then we can move forward that way. Thank you.
Lindsay?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
What worries you most about Shelton's future?
Ah, yes. For me, my concern is that if we don't grow, we could become a ghost town. We need to invest in our youth. We need to make sure that we have appropriate education and employment opportunities for our youth. So it's very important that we invest in our youth. My main concern and biggest fear is that we don't take those actions, and we can lose our youth, and they may move out, and we may see this town shrink. I do not want to see this town become a ghost town. So I think we need to invest in our youth and make sure that they have appropriate employment and education and opportunities for their future. Thank you.
Thank you both. Time now for our closing statements, and you'll have each 30 seconds for these. Shana, you can go first.
I just wanted to say thank you for everybody that attended. Thank you, Jeff, for being our question guy. I don't know how to better say that. And thank you for everybody that turned out. I'm all about supporting the community, whether that be recovery, whether that be education, whether that be our seniors. I just want to see our community thrive, and that's all that I'm doing here. Thank you so much.
Lindsay, 30 seconds to you.
Yes, I am all about supporting youth, public safety, economic development, and I am interested in keeping our taxes low. We are all suffering from the state budget, and I do not want to increase taxes unless absolutely necessary. That is not my intention. While being on council, I have reduced height limits, and I've made the lot sizes smaller, and I'm working on a tax exemption for affordable housing. I am working to make this city bigger and better, and I will continue to do so. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, both of the candidates here. Shana Garbrick, thank you so much, Jeff. Thank you so much. Our next two that will come up to the stage here are Ken and Sharon. Come on up here. Come on up here. Again, this is going to be on Mason Web TV, an opportunity for you to revisit this and share this around with your friends. Again, the ballots are going to be coming out October 9th, and Election Day is November 4th. It's a Tuesday this year. It's an election day.
Thank you, man. Hi, you too.
Yeah, sure.
I have a couple of you.
All the waiting. Does anybody need a cough drop? I brought one for everyone. No? All right.
I'll also let everybody know that the League of Women Voters are going to be doing their Speed Dating Forum in October, I think early October as well, at October 6th. 10th. And then also the Shelton-Mason County Chamber is putting on one as well, so we'll have details on that. Is that when that one is? Thank you. I'll be there and on that day because I told them I would. I just got to put it in my calendar. All right, we go back there with Mason Web. Wonderful. All right, the next conversations here are with Ken and Sharon. So once again, standard rules apply. You each have 60 seconds for an opening statement. This time Sharon will go first on the questions, and then she'll have her closing statement. But that means Ken will go first in his 60-second opening statement.
Good morning, and I also echo thank you for all attending. And it's a fantastic opportunity to grow, you know, what I consider community, which is a core part of why I am, I feel, I felt called to explore this possibility of coming on council. Since I took my last orders and came here in 2016 to Shelton, and there was a large community in my lawn to welcome my family in, of all the places I've lived, Shelton's the first place that truly felt like home. And watching one of my boys graduate with friends that they've had continuously for eight years, I, my desire to get back to this community that's given me so much, and I'm nervous now, not because I'm intimidated by open crowds or large crowds. I've done that in decades of experience. It's, my worry is that my message comes across. And so to be succinct, I have experienced, I feel called and compelled. This community is beautiful and has a possibility to grow better, and I would love to have the opportunity to bring the extensive experience I have in handling these problems to the council. Thank you.
Sharon?
Good afternoon, Sharon. Thank you so much for coming tonight. My name is Sharon Sherman, and I am currently the deputy mayor here in Shelton, Washington, and I am re-running for city position, city council position number three. I was born and raised here in Shelton, Washington, and I love this town. My family's been here since 1889. My family has quite a legacy here. I joke that my DNA is in soil, and those trees are my cousins out there. I graduated from Eastern Washington University and then continued on to the U.S. Air Force where I made the rank of captain. I now own a little town, or a little store downtown Shelton called Ish BMW that represents the talent and creativity of our great community. I'm running again because I believe that understanding our past and our history is important and key in developing our future here in Shelton. I'm honored to continue to have the opportunity to represent the town that I love. Thank you.
Thank you both. Sharon, council has heard concerns about the recent Cota Street traffic calming project. Some say it's safer, others find it confusing or inconvenient. What's your position and how would you balance safety, business needs, and costs?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a note taker. All right. All right, thank you so much for asking that. Yeah, this is kind of a, a bit of a contention here in our community, the Cota Street. I'm all for trying new things and seeing the things work. I think it's quite interesting. It was kind of, in a way, an experiment, what we did with Cota Street. And what you do with an experiment is you learn from it, right? Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. And I will tell you that I was in an accident. Somebody hit me on Cota Street. They were doing 60 miles per hour. So does it slow people down? Yeah, it does. But does it solve all the proper problems down there? No, it doesn't. And unfortunately, a lot of people didn't like that. And here's the deal, it's not about my opinion on Cota Street, it's your opinion on Cota Street because I'm here to represent you. So I got about 30 emails from people telling me how much they hate Cota Street, and I got about three emails telling me how much they love Cota Street. So with that being said, we will be readjusting Cota Street. We're going to try something opposite of what it is right now, and thank you very much.
Ken, same question to you.
Can you please repeat the question?
Council has heard concerns about the recent Cota Street traffic calming project. Some say it's safer, others find it confusing or inconvenient. What's your position and how would you balance safety, business needs, and costs?
Thank you, Jeff, for repeating that. So both those concerns are valid. It is confusing, but it also does increase safety. And sound, and thought and sound decision made went into making that choice initially, but then leadership paused, looked at the result, felt the pulse of the community, and opted to change, to revert, and that's okay. But so long as we keep the intent of why that was initiated, it was to increase safety to make that area more walkable and to attract a, to create an art district that allows Shelton to stand out uniquely as a mecca, a place to come, where Cota Street could be a place, like, have you been to Shelton, Dakota Street? And so the balance there is, I would say, proceeding forward is to keep the intent of why that was done, take the tempo with the people, and if it doesn't work, change it. But again, keep that strategic vision of why you did it in the first place. That way those funds are not completely wasted. Thank you.
Ken, the city has invested in road projects like West Mountain View and is planning improvements along Olympic Highway North. What infrastructure projects should be prioritized next?
I think the question, so the city has a comprehensive plan already in place, and the infrastructure projects that we need in alignment with that plan are to get utilities out to where development is incentivized, to where if we become a city that attracts development or commerce or whatever it may be, that we have the utility infrastructure in place to actually accept that, as well as increase our own access ease and maintenance of that. You know, right now, this, as a citizen, we bear undue weight of infrastructure choices that were made when things became a crisis, and you know that by the cost of your water bill. And so if we plan strategically forward and target undeveloped lands or remediate prior waste that allow, that leave large tracts of land untenable, if we take those steps, increase revenue, get the infrastructure to them, allow that to happen, we grow from there.
Sharon?
Would you repeat the question, please?
The city has invested in road projects like West Mountain View and is planning improvements along Olympic Highway North. What infrastructure projects should be prioritized next?
All right, so this isn't the one time that I'm going to agree with Miguel. It's all about the water, my friends. We need water in this community. I know it sounds crazy because we are surrounded by water and the rain comes down all the time, but it's really important to have the water. And without safe water here, we cannot continue to build, and we need to build. Why do we need to build? So we can grow, so we can pay for those roads. We need those tax dollars, and we need those houses, and we need those businesses. We can't do those if the water isn't there. So we need to make our investment in the water, and a lot of people don't understand that the water is not free. Those buildings cost money. Those projects cost a lot of money, and that's major priority to me. So for me, and that is one of the most important things we have to look at here in Mason County and in Shelton, is for building this water and bringing it to the people. And with that being said, if there's a fire, you want to make sure that everybody has water. So let's make sure we have the water. Thank you.
Ken, as we update zoning and growth plans, how should Shelton approach annexations within the urban growth area?
That was to me? Okay. Can you repeat the question?
As we update zoning and growth plans, how should Shelton approach annexations within the urban growth area?
Thank you. So the urban growth area that is referring to are tracts of land areas identified in that comprehensive plan that are potential areas in which growth can occur. The biggest part about that, or, I apologize again, I'm nervous to make sure my message comes across. What I was trying to get that thought across is that connection with the community, understanding their needs, the present comfort, integrating with our environment, and as well as a comprehensive plan is important. So what I'm saying is, is we need to utilize plans already in place. These things are identified, and much time and effort's gone into answering questions like that. What I would want to do is bring analytical expertise into that plan, ensuring that it actually happens, and the investment time that went into it, including the platforms to allow for public interaction and input. And from there, once we know what the people want and need, integrate that with a comprehensive plan and grow effectively.
Sharon, same question to you. As we update zoning and growth plans, how should Shelton approach annexations within the urban growth area?
Yeah, Shelton's needs to grow. If you look at Shelton, we're basically three by three. That's not a lot of room to grow. We're almost maxed out, and we can't pull more income if we don't have room for those houses and those businesses to come here. So we need to be able to expand a little bit. Luckily for us, so far, we've actually had some people who live on just the edges of town have said, hey, we would like to join Shelton. And we're like, yeah, sure, absolutely. And when nobody argues with that, we have been annexing little piece by little piece. But yeah, would it be good to annex a little bit more? Heck, yeah. We definitely need to be able to grow to bring those businesses in. We can't bring those jobs in, we can't bring those tax dollars in unless we have room for those businesses to be here. Like I said, we're kind of gridlocked right now. We need a little more growth. We have room to do that, so I encourage growth. We've got a couple of great places that would be good to do that, and I don't know if I should leak that right now. So maybe that's an offside conversation, but I definitely think it's time. Thank you.
Final question, Sharon. What principle most often guides your decision-making when you're faced with competing community priorities?
All right, what guides my decision-making when it comes to priorities? Well, number one, I always say safety because we cannot be a thriving community without a safety. And honestly, I love this town, and I love everybody in this town. I love everything about this town. So when the people here can't be safe, we don't feel safe, unfortunately, we have friends that are leaving. We can't, we can't grow, and we can't excel if we don't have that feel of safety. And not just feel, it has to actually be safe. So that is, every time when a question is posed to us, I always say, what is the safety measure here? Where's, what is the most safe option here? Does this matter on safety? And that's what it always comes down to, to me every time. So, thank you.
Ken, question to you. What principle most often guides your decision-making when you're faced with competing community priorities?
I would identify the core principle there is reflecting the fact that I'm a council. It's not me up there. It's not me, it's a we. And so the principle that would inform my decision is, is what do, what does Shelton want to do in this case? And if those competing priorities, as Councilwoman Sherman pointed out, conflict with safety or conflict with a strategic plan, sometimes as a father of five and a grandfather of two, I know that sometimes what's good for your kids isn't always what they want, but to have a gentle hand and let them see that you have experience, you've done that. And I have a vast, a broad expansive experience in leading people into positions they don't want to go, but after you're done and you achieved what you did, or you excelled from where you were, the next time to look at you and trust you. So my priority is, is what is the best good? Have I researched it? Do I know what I'm talking about? And then mentor, represent, and make sure it's executed.
Time now for our closing statements. You each have 30 seconds on this, and Sharon, you'll go first.
First of all, I want to say thank you all for being here. But I also want to say, I originally had three other people running against me, and I actually am so excited that people are excited about being part of our community and participating. So I am not offended in any way, shape, or form, actually. I'm actually really happy about that. So thank you so much for caring about our community because that's really what it matters, is you care. If you're just sitting at home complaining, it doesn't help us at all. So thank you so much, everybody.
Ken, 30 seconds to you.
Thank you, and thank you for that, Councilwoman Sherman. I appreciate that. And my decision for what seat went, like I tell people, I'm not running against anybody. Often that question comes up. I'm running for a thing, and to echo those thoughts a little bit, engage in your democracy. You have a lot of tough decisions to make, and while it's not pivotal, the future of our city that rides on each race, it kind of is. Exercise your vote, approach it intelligently, and if your vote puts confidence in me, I will, I will do my absolute best and experience best. Thank you.
Again, everybody, big hand for both of these candidates. And lovely insurance, Sharon, thank you. Daniel and Miguel are up next. Once again, a big thanks to everybody. This is a nice turnout here for today on a Saturday. Very nice. You guys ready? All right, again, in this race here, we have Daniel and Miguel, and based on the draw, Daniel will take the second question, but also have the opening statement. So 60 seconds to you.
I'm Daniel Lasco, running for seat number seven at the city council. My personal background, I've lived in Shelton for 45-plus years, grew up in Shelton, went to Shelton High School, worked at Simpson Timber Company for a minute, raised my kids here. Just had my son graduate from high school, Shelton High School, just took him to school next, or a couple of weeks ago. My family has a small business in Shelton. I've seen a steady decline of what's going on in Shelton, and I was kind of approached, say, hey, are you interested in this stuff? And I started going to meetings, and I thought I could really help. And I started going to meetings, and I thought I could really help. And so I threw my hat, put my name in the hat, and here we go.
Thank you. Miguel, 60 seconds for your opening statement.
Well, thank you very much, Jeff. You're a great interviewer, and you always get to let candidates, we're listening to learn, and you're not listening to getcha. So I appreciate you very much.
Glad I look at you everywhere, I guess.
I'm Miguel Gutierrez, I'm the city council member for seat seven in the city of Shelton. I'm living the American dream. I'm a first-generation immigrant. I really came to this town 11 years ago and found out, this is like Bedford Falls, and it's wonderful life, you know? And in the past few years, we've been declining and going into Pottersville, and the attitude of this town, a lot of its residents, has become surprisingly negative. And I ran because I did not want Shelton Talks internet trolls running this town. I wanted someone who was thoughtful, and someone who could think about all the decisions and learn, all the acronyms that we have to deal with, the ILL in real life, ILO, the interlocal agreements, MACECON, mental health, patent exemptions, and OTMs, local integrated health programs, MIFHPs, wastewater treatment plants, WWTP. So all those things, I'm ready to learn and willing to keep going on all those things to make Shelton a better place.
All right, thank you, Miguel. Let's see, question one is to you, Miguel. How can Shelton support the success of its new creative district and use the arts to strengthen the local economy?
Oh, thank you for that question, Jeff. I walk my dog every day through the town, through Coda Street, by railroad, and we've done a great job with making the streets accessible and safe, and especially on Coda Street. I'm on the minority opinion of this, that Coda Street was a really good idea. I think we striped it really badly. I think that this could be a location where we can make the arts district like Lombard Street in San Francisco, and make it, make that curb be part of its, really cool on Coda attitude. I think we shouldn't go backwards. I don't think we should have a grid and keep doing the same old things of the past. I think we should be innovative and think about our future, and I've got a lot of ideas to bring Shelton into the future of the 21st century. I don't want 19th century thinking, I want 21st century thinking. Thank you very much.
Daniel, how can Shelton support the success of its new creative district, then use the arts to strengthen the local economy?
If I was to look at the Coda Street, in my opinion, I think it's a kind of a disaster. I don't like it. But the idea is there, right? But the infrastructure's not, coming from a heavy, or construction background, that's, that road is not made for what they're trying to do to it. If they have to, if they wanted to put in the windy things, whatever they do, it's a sidewalk improvement, it's a lot of different things. I like the idea of the, of the art district, that's fantastic. You see a lot of different places doing it. But I just think we need to think about that a little bit more, what we're doing down there. Love the idea. We need to check that striping thing again. Thanks.
Thank you. Daniel, this next question is for you. The updated economic development plan highlights both attracting new industries and supporting existing small businesses. How would you balance those priorities?
Can you ask that again?
Sure. The updated economic development plan highlights both attracting new industries and supporting existing small businesses. How would you balance those priorities?
Ooh, bringing in new industry is, is a great idea. I think we've shot down a few things over the past, I don't know how many years, with the airport being utilized a little bit better. We need to do is, with this, I think we need to take care of what we got so far, like cleaning up the roads, bring in the small business, bring it back to kind of where we were. We are far from where we used to be, as Shelton and the community, but we have to start thinking in a bigger, bigger things to this town.
Thank you. And that conclusion of Miguel's, we'll switch out some batteries on that one. Thank you very much, Diedrich. In the meantime, Miguel, the question is to you. The updated economic development plan highlights both attracting new industries and supporting existing small businesses. How would you balance those priorities?
Sure, I would like to work together with the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Council. I do know Diedrich Peterson and Kevin Schute, and we have a good working relationship, and I think we can think about different options for our future, especially, I'd like to open up the waterfront and have public access to the water. We don't have public waterfront right now. We have to go all the way out to Walker Park, and that's outside the city limits. We could think about redevelopment of our old places like the C Street landfill in Goose Lake, and think about what are opportunities there, but there's a pollution history in this town, and we need to think about how to clean up our pollution, make sure we don't add more pollution, and make sure that we have an economic diversity future. I'd like to have solar panel manufacturer, I'd like to annex part of the plant system, get a lot, run our sewers out there to get everyone's cost of water down. We've done a lot of things we can do that's integrated and not just, you know, single-issue things. If we pull out one piece from this web, we collapse all the other pieces. So we need to make sure that we have a comprehensive plan with the Economic Development Council and our Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
All right, Daniel, just give me a quick check on that.
Check, check. Nothing?
Tragan?
Is it working? There we go.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Public safety is a major concern. What specific steps would you support to address speeding and pedestrian safety on busy streets like Railroad Avenue?
I thought about this today, actually. Walking patrols, I feel, are like, would be really helpful down there. I know that we have a budget with our patrols. It'd be great to have some guys, I don't know if they could potentially run bikes or not, but having guys walk around and be a part of the community, police officers, I think would be great for downtown. It would, you know, improve safety, confidence with everybody else that's kind of down there, dealing with what goes on down there. So that's kind of one of the things I was kind of thinking, like, this is what we need to do for our community for safety.
Miguel, same question. Public safety is a major concern. What specific steps would you support to address speeding and pedestrian safety on busy streets like Railroad Avenue?
You know, there's something that Sharon said that, this is the one time I'm gonna agree with Miguel. Sharon and I agree on about 90% of the things in this town. We pass almost everything that we think is public safety for this town, especially as it deals with downtown, except for that one issue that we haven't talked about extremely yet. But as far, we've created the Western Gateway Project, we've got all the money in, we bought in the transportation benefit district. I wanted to make sure that we had a little more money in, but the council suffered not to do that. But we've done a lot of things and improvements downtown with the Western Gateway Project, making downtown walkable and safe. And I've always congratulated our public works and our street crews for making downtown, especially Railroad Avenue, a safe place to walk. My dog is now 15 years old, who I got from Shelton adopted pet. She can't make it all the way to the park now, but I can put her in a cart and drag her through the accessible streets that we have now. And I go down to the farmer's market that the mayor and I made sure that we had downtown market businesses. So that's how we balance things, is we live our lives authentically.
Final question for you both here, and you kind of spoke about it a little bit in your opening statements, but Miguel, to you first, why did you decide to run again for city council at this time?
I decided to run again for city council because my work is not done. My main mission was to make sure that internet trails did not run Shelton. My main mission was to make sure that someone who was thoughtful and devoted to the city and loves the city and has a future in mind, that our future can be better, that's why I'm running. The future can be better. We are struggling now, but we made all the cuts, and we are lean, and we're ready to go forward and start hiring more, when the climate turns around, and when we have that attitude of being Bedford Falls and not Pottersville. Thank you very much.
And Daniel, once again, you mentioned it earlier in your opening statement, but why did you decide to run for city council at this time?
It was a tough decision, to be honest with you. I have a pretty extensive full-time job that I do right now. I'm not saying that I can't do this, don't think that. I'm kind of a, see a problem, jump in, because that's what we do every day, is solve problems at work. As a construction superintendent, we got problems in Shelton, we honestly do. If you don't think we do, you're absolutely wrong. There's, there's problems that need to happen, so we need to roll up our sleeves, get going on some of these things, move forward in a positive direction, and knowing where we came from, right? Knowing where we came from, and to see where we're at, we're in the wrong direction. And it's not just Shelton, it's, it's across the country, but we can start right here in Shelton.
Time now for our closing statements. Each of you will have 30 seconds, and Miguel, you can go first.
Oh, thank you very much, Jeff. I'm not really a politician, I'm a, I'm a teacher. I was a community organizer, I was, led youth programs. And I wanna find that spirit of cooperation that I found in the teaching field and in the nonprofit field. I wanna find that here in Shelton. I wanna make sure that we can, I can talk to all the leaders in the community and make sure that we can have that housing future, that infrastructure future, that clean water future, and that we can be secure in our golden years. And that's why a lot of students live in Shelton, and that's what I wanna, make sure that students can stay in their homes.
Daniel, 30 seconds for your closing statement.
My, my job that I do, I know I've kind of represented a few times, really aligns with city council. Understanding budgets, understanding people, being able to collaborate with a lot of different trades and different mind thinking to come to a goal, a finish line. This is why I kind of jumped in to do what I'm gonna do. I really encourage you guys, anybody you talk to, if you wanna make some change, if you don't like driving through Shelton and seeing what you're seeing, let's, let's move forward and vote for me.
Thank you both. Daniel and Miguel here. All right, Eric and Holly are our final two candidates.
Oh, yeah, I think that's right. I might have come over on this side, might as well. I forgot.
Well, because the candidates have been so thoughtful with their answers and cognizant of the time, we're gonna have a lot of extra time after, so it's great opportunities for you to meet and mingle with everyone here, so make sure if there were questions unasked or further clarifying follow-ups, grab these candidates, because they'll love to talk with you, I'm sure, as we get ready to wrap this thing up with our final two candidates, Eric and Holly here. Thank you so much for, again, being here, and everyone as well. In the draw, Eric chose to go second, and so Holly will answer the first question, but that is after a 60-second opening statement started by Eric.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I'm Eric Wunisco. I am, I've been in Shelton for 47 of my 57 years of life. I've raised, co-raised, I gotta say co-raised, six, six kids, I have six grandkids. I've run three successful businesses, which I've now retired from. I took over a bankrupt store on Olympic Highway North and turned it around, and I sold it. I took over a store out on Highway Three. I had it for 15 years, and I recently sold it. And I also leased the store, Hill Press Shell, which, if you guys remember, it was like a junkyard on the abatement list, and I turned it around, and I actually got thrown out of there on my lease. But I'm also your mayor for the last almost four years, and I've also been on city council for eight years. And what makes me different is I'm ready to work. I come to work, I read my information, I don't know what read means, I read my information, I do my own research, I ask a lot of questions, and I make a decision based on what I think is right for the citizens in the city of Shelton. Wunisco?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And again, a reminder, screen is 10 seconds, and that is wrap it up here. Holly, 60 seconds for your opening statement.
Okay. Hi, my name's Holly Cahoon. I'm running for seat four on the Shelton City Council. Shelton has been my family's home for four generations, but we're facing challenges right now. Our citizens and visitors should be able to walk our streets, patronize our businesses, and enjoy our parks without hesitation. Let's keep Shelton safe, enforce current ordinances and laws fairly, consistently, and introduce more if we need to. Let's keep our town clean, so it reflects the pride we have in our community. Let's encourage growth in Shelton, increase our revenue. Instead of roadblocks and red tape, why don't we roll out the red carpet? Give them white glove customer service, and let it, let it be known that Shelton is open for business. Let's respect taxpayers by keeping governments small and spend their money wisely. Running a successful downtown business for 30 years has taught me accountability, fiscal discipline, and what I want to bring to the city council. I humbly ask for your support and a vote for me, Holly Cahoon, seat four, Shelton City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly, thank you. All right, into the questions now, Holly, we'll start with you. Holly, the Blue Bridge Alliance program allows police officers to use donated funds to help residents in need while also building community trust. Do you support this approach, and how would you measure its success?
The Blue Bridge Alliance Fund?
Yes.
Repeat the last part of the question?
Do you support this approach, and how would you measure its success in the community?
Well, I guess I would go right to the police and talk to the police. They're administering it. Also, the people in need, is it working for them? But I would go to the police, and they would be the first one to let me know if it's working or not.
Thank you. Eric, the Blue Bridge Alliance program allows police officers to use donated funds to help residents in need while also building community trust. Do you support this approach, and how would you measure its success?
I absolutely support it. It is a wonderful program. What it is, is our police sometimes will go to a domestic violence situation, and there'll be a child there, and they'll take that child to McDonald's, they'll buy him a teddy bear, ice cream cone. This is giving the police a debit card that they have to track, obviously, and they can actually use that card to, to help in situations, fire, emergency, for anything. I'm personally a donor to that program, and I support it 100%. And for, to judge how it works, it's brand new, just started. I guess we'll talk about this in about a year.
Thank you. Eric, as Shelton grows, how should the city pay for long-term infrastructure needs like water, sewer, and road improvements?
Well, growth pays for growth. So right now, we have Olympic Heights development, they are running water lines and sewer lines from pretty much the YMCA all the way up Olympic Heights behind the college. They're putting in stormwater improvements, they'll be putting in sewer roads, and so, yeah, growth pays for growth. I sure wish that we were a big enough city where we could actually pay for a little bit and kind of attract people, but that's just not in our cards right now with our budget. So, yes, growth pays for growth.
Thank you. Holly, as Shelton grows, how should the city pay for long-term infrastructure needs like water, sewer, and road improvements?
I totally agree with Eric. Growth does pay for growth, but we also need to look at our town, and our downtown right now is not, it's a mess for, for current businesses downtown, what they have to deal with every day, to open their doors to business, and how do we encourage new businesses when we are showing that kind of, what we're gonna give to them if they wanna open a business here in our town? It's hard to attract growth for that. Everything that the city council does, I think we, we know water's an issue, so any money we spend, we have to tick the boxes, how, you know, is roads, water, safety, cleanliness. That's how we attract people to our town and keep them safe.
Next question is for you, Eric. Eric, what role should partnerships with local organizations like Mason Health, the Port, or the Chamber play in addressing Shelton's challenges and opportunities?
Well, those, actually, we're all on committees and boards throughout the county and the city that actually work together. We have a, city managers on the EDC board, I'm on a, I'm on the, I'm on, I was on the transit board, I was on the Housing Benefit Authority Board, I'm with the Substance Use Coalition Board. So we actually all, all have committees that we work with, all of these, all of the nonprofits, all of the agencies, and the EDCs, and the, and the chambers to address this. 2015, there was, there was a big out program where they kind of designed how they wanted downtown to look. Haven't got there yet, obviously, finances, but little by little, we try. You know, it was fun, go back to Coda Street. Coda Street is an absolute nightmare. It was done fast, but it was for three reasons. It was to slow down traffic, it did that. It was to create a digital parking, it did that, and it was to create ADOA parking, it did that. But what it also did was, it's just confusing. During the sunlight and the rain, both, you can't see driving down the road, so we take into account, everybody said, we don't like it, it's gonna be going bad shortly.
Thank you. Holly, what role should partnerships with local organizations like Mason Health, the Port, or the Chamber play in addressing Shelton's challenges and opportunities?
I think the main thing is, I'd like to see all of them work together, talk together. You know, the city council should be talking to Mason County Council. We should be working together, coming up with plans. Our downtown, right now, it's almost like a magnet or a hound. hub for homelessness. They congregate, there's a triangle that they go between. We have the ETS truck down there for drug overdoses or whatever, methadone, that attracts more people down there. I think we have to decide, what do we want our downtown to look like? And go with that. And if we don't want it to look the way it's looking, then we need to make changes. And we all need to work together and speak together and come to consensus and work together.
Holly, final question starts with you. What gives you the most hope about Shelton's future?
Shelton has a lot of good people. And, you know, we've been here a lot of years. I'm a hairdresser. I've owned a business. My family's owned this business for 50 years here in town. We've had a storefront for 50 years. People, there's just really good people willing to roll up their sleeves, help. And when called upon, we all pull together and get things done.
Eric, final question is for you as well. What gives you the most hope about Shelton's future?
We have a great town. We have a lot of great people and organizations. We've got the downtown merchants, we've got the Rotary Clubs, we've got the Kiwanis, we've got the Lions Clubs, we've got the Christmas Town, Christmas Town, what's the group? Yes. And we, you know, we have multiple groups, and they all work together. And these groups are all volunteer groups. If we did not have these groups, we would not have parades, we would not have Christmas Town down at, you know, at the Civic Center, and the tree farms, or the tree mazes. These groups need people to join them and help them out. So if anybody looking for something to do, there's many, many clubs out there, and they do a great deal. And without those clubs, we have nothing. Those clubs do everything for us. Oyster Fest, you know, everything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Time now for our closing statements. You'll each have 30 seconds. And at the conclusion of that, just stay in your seats for my closing remarks, and we'll wrap this thing up. But Holly, it's going to begin with you. 30 seconds for your closing statement.
Okay. This is all new to me. I am not a politician, like I said. I am a business owner downtown. My husband taught high school for 38 years. I've raised three kids here in town. I promise, given the job, I'm going to research, I'm going to listen. I'll get things done. That's what I'm hoping to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, 30 seconds for your closing statement.
All right. I just want to say that I've came to the council almost eight years ago, and I've learned an awful lot about Shelton, and what we need and how we need it. Sometimes I'm not going to make you happy. Sometimes you're going to disagree with me, and sometimes you're going to agree with me. I mean, I make the best decision possible for a better Shelton. I know that we have complicated issues, and we have several budget issues that, the five-year forecast, we need sales tax, we need growth, we need to support our downtown, and we need to shop local. I know it's easy to go to Olympia, but if you can get it here, buy it here.
Ladies and gentlemen, Holly and Eric. I want to thank again everybody for being here on a Saturday afternoon. Again, the ballots will be out in October. The November election will be forthcoming as well. There's going to be a few more opportunities for these types of forums in different aspects that you're going to be able to watch. Big thanks to Mason Web TV for having this on their livestream. You can go back and watch this and share with them. Thanks to the PUD3 for having us here today. Thanks to the Mason County GOP for hosting this event. And again, thanks for everybody for being great audience members there. Again, let's give a big hand for everybody, Eric and Holly, Daniel and Miguel, Sharon and Ken, and Lindsay and Shayna. So we're all wrapped up with my portion of it. If you have anything you want to talk with these candidates about further, please feel free. They're available for you, so grab them. Grab them and go. Thank you so much for being here, everybody.